Board of Appeal hearing for October 5th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law, including the provisions that Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16, 2021. The new law allows the Board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. The hearing of this Board is being held remotely via the WebEx platform and is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively muted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments in support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by the project. I think we've talked through the raising your hand icon, but for anybody who's connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Just an appeal that please raise your hand if you plan on commenting the minute that we call the specific project into the record, so we have a lineup of the people who are interested in speaking either in support or in opposition. Please lower your hand immediately after you've spoken. Also, when you have a turn at the mic, please make sure that you give us new information. If somebody has already stated your concern or the reason for your support, please just put your name and address on the record. This is a note to any attorneys on this line who feel compelled to speak over the chair. Please hold your comments until you are asked to speak, because it's getting, it's, we need to just make sure that the attorneys on this are reminded of protocol as we have in our in-person meetings. Mr., for those of you here, because these are all rediscussions, please tell us why you were postponed in the past and talk to us what has changed since your last appearance before the Board. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the rediscussions, do we have any deferrals or withdrawals? If so, could you be the address for us? Hearing none. I'll call the first three cases, calling BOA 1167470, 13 Norton Street. There are two companion cases, BOA 1167473, 15 Norton Street, BOA 1167475, 17 Norton Street. Is the proponent on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just want to make sure before I go into saying all the violations and the purpose that you hear. This is for 13 Norton seeking to erect a single-family residential dwelling. This is one of three buildings on one lot. The violation is Article 69, 69, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 69, Section 30.1, the front building alignment. Article 69, Section 30.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is for 15 Norton seeking to erect a single-family residential dwelling, one of three buildings on one lot. The violation is Article 69, 69, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 69, Section 30.1, the front building alignment. Article 69, Section 30.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. And this is for 17 Norton seeking to erect a single-family residential dwelling on one of, one of three buildings on one lot. The violation, Article 69.30.1, the front building alignment, and 69.30.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Name and address to the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Jeff Grego at Grego &amp; Toscano, with an address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant, Tom Falcucci, and with me I also have author Chu and Devin Riley Marini from Chu &amp; Company as the architects on the project. As was mentioned, the proposal is to raise an existing building. The building is condemned by the city. It is vacant and erect three one-family homes with six parking spaces, two underneath the basement area of each building, and then one additional parking spot on an existing driveway for guest parking. This particular district is a one-family, 6,000-sub district, and our total lot size is 20,000 square feet. Just to point out, I know, Madam Chair, you had asked to see what the changes were from our last deferral, so what we have done during this process is to work with the community, reduce the number of units. This was originally going to be a seven-unit project, so now we are at three separate single families. And then, most recently, working with our rear of Butter, if we could keep this slide on, you can see we have 10,500 square feet now of green space in the rear of the property. So we moved our back building 15 feet away from the rear property line, which now gives us a 55-foot rear setback on that back building. Just to go over the floor plans, these are all identical buildings in design. So in each of them, there is a basement area, and that would house the garage, which would have two parking spaces within that garage, and then a storage area. The basements are approximately 50% below grade, and a lot of that has to do with the topography of the lot as it goes down and up. And then also, we wanted specifically to keep the heights down in this building, on these three buildings, we're at 32 feet, which is below the 35-foot requirement for the area. As we go up to the first floor, we have front porches, kitchen dining area, a half-bath living room, and then a deck. We then go up to the second floor, which houses our three bedrooms and an additional two bath with a study area. And then the attics are just storage on each of the buildings. Just to go over the violations that were mentioned, the lot frontage in 13 Norton was insufficient. 60 would be required, we're at 27 and a half. Our building alignment, we are proposing 67, and so it would be modal, which would be 25. And then we also have multiple buildings on the lot, so that triggers that violation for all three of those buildings. And then at 15 Norton, the only different violation was the rear yard setback, because one of our own buildings is in back of that. So that would be 40 would be required, and we're at 20. I can answer any questions at the pool if I may.
So the, all the parking is accessed through that driveway, so in fact, there will be no garage door facing the street, right?
Correct, Madam Chair. And the only, so you just see an existing driveway on the other side of the building. That is already in existence, so our thought was to have one, the ability to have a visitor spot or a pickup drop-off if anyone was getting deliveries or anything like that, away from the main entrance.
Okay, so that means two curb cuts and?
There was existing two curb cuts now, just so the chair knows.
Okay. Okay. And I think those were my questions. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Excuse me, the plans are good. No questions on the scope. So I guess I just didn't realize, so the topography of the site dips in the middle? Is that why we're ex, or we're elevating all the parking levels?
Correct, and then also just keeping the heights, just to be cognizant on height on the properties, to keep them as low as possible.
And then, just one other question, just so I make sure I understand, because I know there's been some sort of questions in the community about shadowing, and we don't have any of those shadow studies to understand today, do we?
We do, the last slides show the shadow studies. So the biggest just concern during the process has been the shadowing in the back, which is minimal to none. And we have those studies that Chu's office had performed. But now that we pulled that building 15 additional feet away from the rear, now it's substantially less. I think if we keep going, the shadow study shouldn't be in there, Mr. Robinson. That's the last slide.
Apologize if I missed those, because I was looking. So can I also, just in, just really quick, so I can understand, so the adjacent rear of Butter is the sort of, I guess, urban farm. Looks, it looks, in terms of the aerial, is that their storage area that directly of Butts? And I see some greenhouses, but they seem to be pushed to the other edge of their site. Is that correct?
That's correct, and right now in the back, there's a line of trees too. So that completely buffers our property anyway. I don't know, the trees probably cause like additional shadowing, but these buildings would cause no shadowing.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, can you please just show us the shadow study? Did you say Mr. Coxwood was the last sheet?
I believe it is, yes, if we keep going, the last few, here we go.
Sorry, I somehow missed these.
And? Okay. Okay. Okay, got it, okay. Let's see, and these are going to be for homeownership?
Correct.
Okay.
I have no further questions from me, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? Let's hear from elected officials first.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. This project has been happening and dated back since summer of 2019, and the first of Butters' meeting was held by my predecessor, Brian Flynn, back in September of 2019. This project has come a long way, starting off at seven townhomes and one connected structure, and has significantly changed after the applicants heard feedback from Butters during the community process, where they prefer the single-family detached homes. The applicants appeared before the Reedville Watch neighborhood group and presented their revised plans on September 19th of 2021 and received positive feedback from the group. The rear of Butters, as mentioned, are the owners of We Grow Microgreens LLC, which is an urban farm, and they did have concerns regarding shading, and shadow study was conducted. And there were concerns for significant shade, particularly during the winter months when the farm grows food. These concerns were brought to the applicant's attention, and they did make those changes that they have presented with the design today, which we believe will alleviate some of these concerns that the farm has. Copies of the new shadow study that the farm conducted were sent to our office today, and the Board has been sent that as well for review. Madam Chair, we believe this project will add value to the community in allowing for homeownership opportunities in Hyde Park. Our office has received letters of support and testimony in opposition for this proposal. We would like to see it move forward, and we just ask that the applicants to continue to communicate with We Grow Microgreens LLC as they move forward in the process, as that farm is an important addition to our community with food access. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Jordan Frias here from the Counselor Ricardo Arroyo's office. Would like to go on record in support of this proposal, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, Assistant Counselor Lodge, Michael Flaherty. The Council stands with Counselor Arroyo in support. The proponents had a good track record of working with neighbors. And if approved, the proponents encourage work with the neighbors to address concerns during the construction phases. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have those letters that the Mayor's Office spoke of in support and in opposition.
Madam Chair, I do have two raised hands. I'll start off with Lisa. You've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Lisa Evans, and I am the co-owner of the farm at 21 Norton Street in Hyde Park. I am also a resident of Rosendale at 10 Wells Street. I'm speaking because we are owners of the farm bordering to the north of this project. We are committed to making our farm a success. We also purchased 19 Norton Street to protect the farm from development. The shadow study by MIT Professor Rafi Segal, who clearly demonstrates that shadows will be cast on the farm and the yard of 19 Norton Street.
Okay, so, so hold on. So what is happening on Norton Street, at 19 Norton Street? Are you growing crops there, or is, what is it?
So 19 Norton Street is a single-family house that we purchased in order to protect it from development. We currently have the home rented, and we are utilizing the backyard to grow vegetables, which is permissible under Article 89, which makes urban farming permissible in the city of Boston.
So the rear yard is for vegetables, and you're concerned about the shadow that this building creates on, let's see, 14, okay, for vegetables, okay, at 19 Norton, Norton, okay.
In addition, our farm will be affected by the proposed three houses. These houses will be 37 feet at their peak. The surrounding houses in the neighborhood range from 15 feet to 25. We will have shadows cast on the farm three hours a day on March 21st, two hours a day on June 21st, four hours of shadows on the farm September 21st, and eight hours of shadows on December 21st.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little confused, because we looked at the shadow study done by the applicant for the farm in your, in, that's to the rear of the proposal, the proposed property line, and it didn't show any impact. So the impacts that you're talking about are specifically at 19 Norton?
Um, no.
Okay.
The impacts that we have demonstrated are specifically at 21 Norton Street, which is the address of our farm. And our shadow study that we completed a cost of over $8,000 with shadow study consultant Rafi Segal. He's a professor at MIT and an architect. He also completed the shadow study for the Boston Public Garden. Indicates very different shadows than the developer's shadow study.
Okay.
We do not feel that the developer's shadow study was done in good faith or was done correctly.
No, I just, I just, no, no, nothing else, just, okay. So you're concerned about shadows. Anything else that you're concerned about?
There are a number of requirements in the Article 69 of the code that are intended to preserve the low-density residential character of the area, including appropriate front, rear, and side setbacks, minimum footage requirements, and limiting the use of single-family homes. That's squeezing multiple homes onto a single-family lot. Proposed development violates all of these requirements. It is precisely the type of dense development that the code prohibits. This is the principal reason why the Board should deny the requested variances.
Okay, thank you. Can I hear from Mrs. Segal? Please keep it direct and talk very specifically about the shadow impacts.
Yes, of course, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Rafi Segal, Associate Professor of Architecture and Urbanism at MIT, 77 Massachusetts Avenue, Cambridge, Boston. I conducted the shadow studies for the, for the farm and to point out a few things to explain. First, building height. When we do shadow studies, we take the ridge of the roof as the height, because that creates shadow. The ridges of the roof of 13, 15, and 17 Norton are between 37 feet and 38 feet. Secondly, the buildings on 13 to 17 Norton are situated at grade, which is above the grade of the farm, which adds height. Point two, trees are not counted in shadow studies. There is a variety of reasons, I won't go into it. Point three, the hours indicated by Lisa throughout these four test days of shadows are correct, and the impact will be on the greenhouse and on the northern back side. So the buildings are causing shadows. And point four, which is not directly related to shadows, but is an environmental issue, is a storm-water runoff, which asphalt and roofs and cars parked, and naturally, as I explained, the side of 13 to 17 Norton is higher grade. They will runoff onto 19 Norton and onto the farm. So that's another environmental issue that needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Can we hear from anybody else, any other, other testimony?
Ethel, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I, I am not commenting on this particular.
Okay. Sorry, can you just lower your hand, and anyone else who's spoken, can you please lower your hand?
Well, I'm sorry.
Yep, caller 736, you've been unmuted, is that you, minor?
Yes, Craig, I'm at Reedville. I just, I want to comment on the, on a different interpretation of the Mayor's support.
Mr. Barton, before you proceed any further, please put your address on the record.
Okay, that's Colchester Street, Reedville.
Okay.
I'm Reedville, an active, an inactive member of the Reedville Watch, which the Mayor's Office referred to as in support. She said on a September meeting, in support of this proposal before you, and no such thing happened. I helped run the Reedville Watch meeting, and there was never ever support shown for this opponent. There is active support for this oasis that Ms. Evans created here at the farm. This is an oasis to the neighborhood that we don't want to jeopardize. And indeed, as I hear the MIT professor, it is jeopardized by the high ridge. That's usually referring to the high ridge of the, of these proposed buildings. And, and we should not risk the health of this farm. Now, as I suggested to the developer, hubble and, but that, hubble building ranches, ranch-style homes, you don't have to build as high as you can be. And that would, that would eliminate your, the shadow effect, and maybe choose to go that route. And that's the only route that should be taken. I thank you for your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so, Counselor?
Yes, thank you.
It sounds like, it sounds like there are three issues that have been raised. It's shadows, and I'd say slash height, related to height, density, and storm-water runoff. Can you speak to each one of those issues?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. So first, on the height issue, we specifically kept these buildings below the required zoning height for that area. height for that area. Always it has been about shadowing in the back of the property, which the farm has always maintained. That's why we specifically kept a 55-foot setback, even though when only 40 would be required. There are existing trees in the back now.
So, Counselor, it sounds like there is a way to make this work. Is it maybe true that you, you're below the height limit as set by zoning, but it sounds that you have an unusual circumstance in your neighbors? And I'm just wondering if there's a way for you to be neighborly and, and relook at your height? Because it looks like it's the impact on the address at 19 Norton, on the rear yard, in addition to other, other possible shadows. And I think related to that is storm-water runoff. Do you have, can you provide us catch basin on site or something like that?
Yes, so, Madam Chair, we plan on putting two catch basins on site. That has been, and we let folks know that those are shown, will be shown in our engineering plans as well. I also want to point out, when we started the process, and we have no problem to continue, of course, working and welcome working with our neighbors, the building at 19 Norton was only purchased after our project was proposed and long underway, so.
Okay, got it.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Shawnee from DND would like to make a comment. Is it okay to add her comment?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Shawnee, please, I'm just unmuted. Shawnee, okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Jessica. My name is Shawnee Fletcher. I'm the grassroots open space program manager at the Department of Neighborhood Development. We have been aware of this project and the concerns by the abutting farm. We sold the land to the farm to create this site, and we do have still, we do know that the, especially the shadow on the back portion of the farm has been greatly reduced. We do still have some concerns about the shadow on the greenhouse in the winter months, when the greenhouse would be most in need to grow vegetables, when local fresh food is less available, because obviously of the winter. So, we just wanted to register that concern that we have still remaining of the shadow, which I think possibly has been increased on the greenhouse by the movement of the house from the back closer up. Thank you.
Let me just ask you a direct question. Are you satisfied with the extent of the shadow surveys and analyses that have been done?
I think there would be, it would be useful to have more detailed hour-by-hour shadow projections. What we saw as of yesterday from Rafi Segal was very informative, but more detail would be useful to make a thorough analysis.
Okay, thank you. May I ask, may I ask our board members, are you comfortable with going ahead with this? Because it sounds that this is, the urban farm is an unusual use and likely needs to be protected, so what is your thought?
I, I just, I just have one question, and maybe Eric can clarify. What is, what is the height of the building before it stops to go to a pinch? Like, if this was a flat-roofed building, what would, what would the height be with no attic?
I have to pull up that room. Maybe, maybe it's hard for it to talk. It looks like it's measured at 20, looks like 20 feet, eight inches roughly, to the E-line. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, then, can I ask a related question? So, at the 20 feet, does that create the shadows or does that then resolve the issue? Or somewhere in between?
So, I guess I, I have a question. I mean, not a question or observation maybe for the board. I'm not sure if the board reviewed the Segal studies in blue and pink that were sent by email. I mean, yeah. I, I think they're, they're helpful, but I also think that actually 19, as well, is creating as much shadowing on the greenhouse as the proposed at, you know, 13 through 17. So, you know, it seems to be that the red is the overlay of the abutting properties, not 13 through 17, and the blue is the current proponent's product. So, as you look at, and that's my, I guess I want to make sure, but that's what it appears to be. So, the 19 is casting as many shadows as, you know, as anything else really on the adjacent parcel, for my eyes, and I just want to make sure.
Okay. Ms. Edwards, can you pull up the shadow study that the applicants, applicants did? Because it did look like there was one very long boxy building that perhaps had the greatest impact in my quick view of it before. In the meantime, I think the question to, to counsel is, to pick up on what Ms. Dong's thought was, is what is your flexibility on maintaining height?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think, you know, e- even though we felt like we've worked on this, and like Mr. Robinson said, the next-door building actually cast as much shadow we'd be happy to shave off, and that back-left building, it seems to be casting at 17 to take off that attic space if, if the board would. So, please, just to sort of make things even better.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Hampton, you heard that, right?
I did. This is going to go through a robust design review anyway, because Article 69 of zoning code requires that anything that's over 750 square feet, of course, floor area, it's seen from a public way, needs to go through small project review under Article 80 for the design component.
Okay. Okay, so, and, okay, so, given this information, may I have a motion, please?
So, I, I'd like to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review, specific to reducing, if not eliminating, the attic space to lower the height of the, overall height of the building.
I'll second that.
Okay. And lower height and of building? And then, is there a motion to be included for the storm-water runoff?
Oh, yes, in a proviso that two catch basins be put in for storm-water runoff.
Okay, catch basin for storm water. And then, you know, the final thing that I need to talk to the board about is generally when we have, I think it's the, the concept of moving next to a big farm. Somebody moves in next to a big farm and then starts complaining about the pigs. So, just make clear that any, any early use that the farm goes through, if they start work at 5 o'clock, that the residents of this building need to be aware of that fact, that they, the farm doesn't become a nuisance, or perceived or understood as a nuisance when it predated the, the construction of these houses. Okay, so I don't know what you can do in the, in acknowledging that somewhere in the deed or something? Okay, Counselor?
Yeah, in the condominium docks, Madam Chair, that's pretty scary.
Yes, somewhere else, yeah, exactly. And I think Jeff may be able to, or the legal staff may be able to help with that proviso. We did use it.
We used that on Shetland Street in Roxbury.
Exactly right, Shetland Street. So, go ahead.
I had one other question, Madam Chair. Joe, on your proviso to eliminate or reduce the attic space, is that for all of the buildings or the back though?
That's for all of the buildings. It seems like the front building could produce a shadow too on 19, which is now a farm, so that's for all of the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there a second to this?
A second, bud.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling another case, calling BOA 119-8971-196-HOBSTREET. This is raise the existing structure erected five-unit residential dwelling with rear decks and parking for five vehicles. Violation Article 27-T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod, Article 53, Section 8, multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot areas insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the billet height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the billet height number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, side yards insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yards insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Name and address for the record, please.
Afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this project is located closest to the central square section of the East Boston neighborhood. Our proposal is to raise the existing single-family structure, which does have an existing curb cut, and propose to erect a multi-five-unit, multi-family dwelling, which would include a mix of one and two bedroom units. The proposed structure is directly adjacent to two nine-unit, multi-family buildings that have recently been constructed, and this section of Higher Street actually has a number of multi-family dwellings along that portion of the street. The design of this building, we've actually modified it a bit to include only five units. We do keep the front of this building, or at least we're trying to respect some of the height along that section of Higher Street, but this is somewhat of a transitional site for this, for this section of Higher Street. The buildings next to it, each are about four stories tall. As you move up Higher Street, there is a mix of three and four-story buildings on that, specifically on that side of the street. Our proposal, again, would be five units, so with five parking spaces total. We are not proposing any roof decks above the fourth level, so no issues with headhouses or any building code relief in that regard. Our, our zoning district is a 3F 2000, a three-family is allowed, five-unit would require a variance. We do sit on a 2,500-square-foot lot, which is generally typical for this neighborhood. And I do, do see here that we are showing the renderings, and of course, have already indicated that the garage door would need to be one that is translucent. Solid doors are not necessarily favored by the board, and certainly we can address that as part of the design review. Respect the other relief that we require. Our building does stand at four stories total, although we do step it down towards the front, but the overall height of the building is about 39 and a half feet tall, which is consistent with the surrounding buildings to our left, as well as others on that side of Higher Street.
So, let me question to the Lenz, the, about the rear yard insufficiency, how close are you to the property line?
We are 11 feet from the rear property line, and that is consistent in alignment. I, I don't know if I have an aerial photo with the alignment of the two multifamilies immediately to our left. We were trying to keep somewhat of a consistent setback for the two, the two buildings that are to our left.
So, and, and how far is that from the building behind? Because I've been.
Building behind, the building behind.
I've been noticing, I've been noticing that we've been allowing a lot of rear yard relief, and then when the building actually gets constructed, it does tend to create a wall to the rear of Butters, or be too, too intrusive into their lives and to their yards. So, so that's why my curiosity about, this is what triggers my curiosity about this.
I actually handled the permitting, I believe, for the building directly behind this as well. That building sits at about 35, close to 40 feet, I believe, from its rear property line, so the separation is about 40 to 50 feet between the two buildings.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are generally fine. I, I do have a quick question for proponents. So, is there a topographic change from front to rear that you're actually feeling like stepping up the building to the back against the rear of Butters, as Madam Chair?
I, good question, Mr. Robinson. I'm not, clearly not the designer here. I, I felt, my, my opinion, I felt that having the fourth story closer to the front of the building probably made more sense from a design standpoint, and I, I think the functionality of the roof, I don't even think we're proposing a roof deck in the front, would allow for at least a greater space in the back. I did examine this with the, with the proponent, and I believe that the way they were designing it, I suppose anything's possible, but I think shifting that to the front was even a comment that we heard in the community process. So, if that's something that certainly would soften the look of the back of this building, I think we have room to do that, where we could step down the back of the building to three stories and just leave the front at four. And that would be consistent with the height of the buildings immediately to our left, the two multifamilies that are immediately to our left.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Bob D'Amico has spoken this as well. I'd like to put his comments in for the record.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to?
Madam Chair, did you hear me? Sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, I did, thank you.
Mr. D'Amico, you want me to put his comments in for the record?
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding 196 Hobst Street in the opinion of BTD, there is only enough room for state-inadequate maneuverability for three spaces. Also, the curb cut would have to be moved.
Madam Chair, I, I can respond. We, we did actually look at the parking, and we do show five total space. I believe they're all full sides in the plan. We've considered some adjustments to that that would allow for the five spaces to remain. We're happy to work with BTD on that. I think changing one or two of those to compact would actually allow for the five spaces for fully, full maneuverability.
Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam.
I'll give you questions first.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Caller number with the mayor's office, Neighborhood Services, that's on record in support of this proposal during the community process run by our liaison. The applicant received support from the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. We also, our office received four letters of support from Butters, which we forwarded to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Vannetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. I just speak in support of the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand at the moment.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review, particularly to that fourth level, maybe moving it to the front so it matches the other new buildings that were nicely done on that street, and then reduces the impact to the rear as well, so. It makes sense, thank you. I'll second that. Eric?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, have a good day.
Calling another case, calling BOA 121-1031-134-TERRISTREET. This is new construction, six-story, five-unit, multi-family building. The violation is Article 59, Section 18. Use is forbidden in MFR and L1 zone. Article 59, Section 37, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 59, Section 19, building height. Article 59, Section 19, the rear yard insufficient. Article 59, Section 19, usable open spaces insufficient. And Article 59, Section 19, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Cazulla, McGarret McCarthy and Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. With me today is Wyatt Comeran and Stephen Mayer from Terrace Charlie LLC. They are the property owners, developers, as well as the architects on this project. They've done several recent small developments on Terrace Street, so they are uniquely situated to develop on, on this type of site with their experience. And, Madam Chair, you had asked in your opening at 12:30 as to why each applicant had deferred originally, and just to answer that question, we had deferred in August for this original hearing on this project. In order to finalize our community process with the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, and due to their rules and regulations, they asked us to come back to a second meeting, and because of our timing on the, the previous hearing, we weren't able to do that, so we had to defer. We've since gone back to them, and they've since voted unanimously in support of the project, and submitted a letter as such. So, I just wanted to respond to your direct question to each applicant at the beginning. As far as the property is concerned, quickly, it's 134 Terrace Street. It's about an 1,800-square-foot lot. It is a vacant, kind of overgrown, chain-linked fence eyesore in the neighborhood. The neighborhood, as you will recall, Madam Chair, and members of the board, it is transitioning kind of overall from a local industrial use now to more of a, a now to more of a mixed use, but with a lot of residential uses in the neighborhood. And, you know, directly adjacent to this is the Oliver Dixon Pickle Factory. There is a proposed building, or a pickle-two building that's in the process as well. And directly to the rear is the commuter rail tracks, as well as Southwest Corridor Park. So there's no rear Butters to this site. And as for what's written in the record, Madam Chair, again, just very quickly, it is a six-story building. You'll see in front of you, we did provide some renderings as well, showing kind of a high-quality architectural design. What's being proposed is a ground-floor lobby, which will include residential storage units and elevator area to the upper floors. These are being proposed as five condo homeownership units. They're all two beds, two baths. They're all over one thousand square feet in unit size. Each unit will be on its own floor. So it's a six-story building, lobby space on the first floor with the storage. And then each unit above will kind of repeat itself, will provide five units. And as for open space, you know, we were a little concerned about having at-grade open space here based on its proximity to the train track, both because of noise and air quality. So what's being proposed is about five hundred square feet of roof deck amenities space to help provide an open space for the residents. It's kind of thoughtfully designed in a way that it's tucked behind some mechanical equipment, elevator enclosure. There's also a planted roof that you see in the imagery, the floor plant, that kind of push all of this back from Terrace Street, so you cannot see it from the street.
Hold on, Counselor.
Yep.
Ms. Edwards, can you get to that drawing? And may I ask if the, is this team designed the building further down the street that's, that's the second, I guess it's the second building that's closest to Tremont that's under construction?
I believe so, Madam Chair. And Ms. Edwards, if you go to slide nineteen, you will see the, I apologize, there's a lot of slides, but nineteen would have the roof deck plant and the planted roof. And as for your question, Madam Chair, about the other development, yes, this team has developed it. I think you're asking maybe about eighty Terrace Street? Eighty to eighty.
That road is such a mess that every time I drive past it, which is probably every second day, it's impossible to just stop and figure exactly what the address is, but maybe?
It's not.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair, it's not, they're not doing any development down by Tremont Street, I don't believe. Their development on Terrace is closer down towards, like, the Boston Building Resources and the Diablo Glass School, Allen Street, more in the middle of the street.
So it's on this side, okay. And so they're proposing the one at the intersection of Terrace and Cedar? Is that, is that one of theirs, too?
I don't believe so. Wyatt or Stephen, do you want to answer that question, so I don't misspeak?
Yeah, this is Stephen Meyer. Yeah, so the projects that we currently have on the street are forty and one-thirty-two. Forty is a little bit closer to Tremont Street, and forty and one-thirty-two are both affordable housing being done with department and neighborhood development in conjunction with them. And then we have eighty Terrace Street, which is kind of in between those two. And then this is our only other proposed project on the street, so the other large developments are.
And you're, and this is not artist-led work?
No, this is not. This will be market rate housing, forty and one-thirty-two are artist-led work, and then eighty is also, that's nine units of market rate.
Because I have to say that a building that is closest to Tremont, which is under construction, it looks like it has a, so if I'm looking at this, the planted roof is at the rear of the building?
Yes, ma'am. No, Madam Chair.
Sorry, the planted roof here is at the front of the building. So the bottom of this page here is Terrace Street, and then the roof deck is pushed back, so that's against the train line to the rear of the building.
Okay, got it, okay. Okay, yeah, because that, it looks like there's an additional floor up there. Now, I have a question about the Butters. I have actually two questions. One is, you're asking for relief from parking. Have you explored if there's any possibility of providing parking on site?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we've looked at the site. I mean, the site is about thirty feet wide. So, and it is a narrow site, and it doesn't really provide enough room. We just heard from Bob D'Amico on the previous project. I think that the design and maneuverability would be a problem here, as it's only thirty feet wide to provide any parking. The access and egress is also no, I don't believe in, Stephen, is there an existing curb cut? I'm not sure if there is or not.
No, there is no existing curb cuts from this site. And also for standard between the two, the two T-stops, which are very nearby, the two four-story.
Don't tell me about the T-stops, please. I know my fellow board members are tired of me talking about everybody double and triple counting the seat on a train. But are you sure? Because this looks like, well, there is a curb cut, which doesn't appear on one-twenty-eights property.
No, there's no curb cut, Madam Chair, I don't believe. Right, Stephen, that's an adjacent property, or is that our property?
There's no curb cut. The curb cut you may see is formerly in front of one-thirty-two Terrace Street, which is the affordable artist housing to the north. There's no curb cut in front of one-thirty-four.
Okay. And then, because the thing I think we're all cognizant of is that this street is proposed to see a lot of development, with the cannabis store up across the street, kind of, and all the development. And this is going to be a classic tension-filled lifestyle for anybody who plans on buying a condo here and plans on having a vehicle for work reasons or other reasons. So I just need to ask that. Let's see, so the use is forbidden, the height, okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. No specific questions to the scope. I do have one question just for the council, because I'm not familiar enough. The building to the right-hand side that you're indicating is in process, the pickle factory two, where is that in its process? Because I think part of what you're proposing, obviously, is playing off that density.
Yes, Mr. Robinson. So that's the, that is the pickle-two building, which is being proposed by Wynn Companies. Our office represents them as well for full disclosure. So I actually can speak to this personally. They are, that's been approved for a long time. It was re-approved back in twenty-nineteen or twenty-twenty. And they are, they are actually, will be, they're in the process of a notice of project change for the seven-story building. So it's been approved, but there are some tweaks that need, because it's Article eighty, large project, there are some tweaks that they made to some of the items with the project that I have slowed it down in construction. But it is an approved project.
Okay, thank you.
And what is the height of this proposed building?
Madam Chair, to be clear, do you mean the height of our proposed building or the height of the other?
One-thirty-four Terrace.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. The height of the proposed building is sixty-nine feet, eleven inches. So just under the seventy-foot stick build requirement.
Okay, so if your violation is building height, so what is the height requirement in this district?
Yes, ma'am. The height requirement in this district is forty feet. What we're asking for is sixty-nine feet, eleven inches. I will, if I may, just, the reason why we're asking for that is a few reasons. The main reason is because of the narrowness of the site, as we talked about previously. But this site, as I had mentioned, abuts the MBTA tracks and the Southwest Corridor Park to the rear. So this will never have rear residential Butters. And also, as you had mentioned, you're familiar with the area, Madam Chair, there is a very significant grade change as you cross the street up toward Parker Street. So this, in our, in our eyes, mitigates any impact on the building height because there's just such a significant grade change directly across the street. And then behind you, there will never be a rear Butters. So that's why we were proposing this height.
But the question is, what does it do to your building at one, to the building at one-thirty-two?
I can speak a little bit to that. So because we developed one-thirty-two and are working on this as well, we specifically designed the plans so that the area where there are windows along the property line of one-thirty-two, we pulled back the one-thirty-four building as far as we could on the other side to specifically respond to that. And then we also, again, are kind of trying to provide with the height a step between our building and the larger buildings of pickle-two, which kind of reflects the height of the initial pickle-dixon as well, to be a bit of a transition between the lower side and the higher buildings there.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal? Let's hear from elected officials or representatives of elected officials first.
Hi, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Molly Griffin here from the mayor's office of neighborhood services. Our office held in a Butters meeting on Thursday, July first, twenty-twenty-one. And since then, we've received letters of support from Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, the Community Alliance of Mission Hill, and from the property owner of the directed Butters to this project. So due to that, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one letter as support, one letter of opposition.
Allison, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi, good afternoon. My name's Allison Pulteness. I live on Long Street in Mission Hill. And I am concerned about the impact on one-thirty-two. The D and D lottery for those units was just, was just held today. The advertising for those units showed a very nice green space next to them, and obviously, that's not what's going to happen. So both properties, one-thirty-two and one-thirty-four, are lacking a lot in open space, obviously. And as this area is known for the traffic, the heat island, the narrow sidewalks, keeping those evergreens there, keeping it open would really benefit one-thirty-two. And obviously, the market-rate condos, they are constructing down the street at eighty as well. So I'm just sad to see those tall trees go. It's not an ISO, it's been an ISO since they've been using it as a lay-down area. But I feel like six stories is way too much. One-thirty-two also has a roof deck. They look extremely close to each other. It just doesn't make sense to me on this site. Thank you.
I'd just like to jump in quickly to clarify that one-thirty-two does not have a roof deck in that building.
Hold on, hold on. I just, I just need to make sure we've covered everybody on testimony. Ms. Ambassador, are we good?
Yeah, Lauren, can you mute yourself?
Lauren Brody from City Council, Kenzie Box Office. The councilor joins the neighborhood groups CAMH and MHNHS to support this project in appreciation for their commitment to home ownership and the public realm improvements, especially the sidewalk setbacks that we very much need on Terrace. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no, I have no additional raised hands, thank you.
Okay, Counselor, any comments in response?
No, Madam Chair. I believe we've covered everything on our end, but thank you for asking, we appreciate it.
Okay, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the design review BPDA.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the record, I will put my vote in as in opposition because I do think that building for new construction is too high, and it just feels like it's going to squeeze its Butters at one-thirty-two. So motion carries, so you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling next two cases, calling DOA one-one-seven, seven-zero-two-zero, one-twenty Bellevue Street. There's a companion case, DOA one-one-seven, seven-zero-two-four, one-twenty R Bellevue Street. This is the one-twenty Bellevue. This application is filed in conjunction. The zoning code relief, no work to be done at one-twenty Bellevue Street. So this is one of two buildings on the same lot. The violation is Article fifty-six, section forty, two or more dwellings on the same lot. This is one-twenty R. This is the renovate and circular of eighteen-eighties existing carriage house into a single-family dwelling. Remove the building eleven feet from the side yard and a new building. Extend the foundation at the rear to construct a two-car garage. The violation is Article fifty-six, section forty, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article fifty-six, section forty, two or more dwellings on the same lot. And Article fifty-six, section thirty-nine, look for off-location of off-street parking. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Kevin Cludier. I'm the attorney for the project, and I have a business address of nineteen-ninety Center Street in West Roxbury. I'm joined here today by the project applicant and owner, John Hallery, as well as project architects, Ed Roach and Gavin Driscoll from White House Architecture. And I am pleased to be able to present what I'd suggest is a historically significant project. What we are seeking to do is to preserve and by renovating and repurposing a one-hundred-and-thirty-year-old carriage house into a single-family home on this thirty-four thousand-square-foot lot. And with respect to the historical nature, carriage houses in Boston represent a piece of Boston's history. They were prevalent in the nineteenth and early twentieth century, and the purpose was to service the main home. And quite literally, to house carriages, horse-drawn carriages, as well as to make room for the horses and associated equipment. They would also serve as living quarters for servants who would also work and be employed by the property owners. They served as, the function was to serve the main home. And these are buildings that unfortunately are falling kind of by the wayside through the city. And we suggest this is a great project to show an ability and a way to maintain this historical architecture and this character, but to repurpose the functionality of these to meet today's needs.
So Counselor, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Was this address, one-twenty Bellevue and one-twenty R Bellevue Street, before this board in the past?
It was. This was back in two thousand, what year was it, John? Two thousand and seven, but with an entirely different design. Back then, what they were trying to do was really to enlarge the main home on the lot that sits at the front of the lot. Whereas what we're trying to do now is we're not proposing work to the main home, but simply to renovate and repurpose the carriage house.
Okay. So tell us, so talk us through what this means to this property, having two buildings on the same lot? And, you know, please also, as you do that, speak to the violations?
Well, certainly, yeah. The violations are created, they're not your normal violations with respect to density, setbacks, heights, et cetera. What we're working with here is essentially the citywide prohibition against having two or more dwellings on the same lot, which really presents a hurdle to any type of carriage house repurpose or renovation because by their function, we're placed on the same lot as a main home. So the violation, of course, is the two dwellings on the same lot. Second violation would be including the parking spots, parking spaces in front of a home. And those parking spaces are actually between the main home and what would be the renovated carriage house. And there's obvious reasons for that prohibition, but for aesthetic purposes, they won't even be visible from the curb side or from the street. But they would serve a valuable function by allowing that off-street parking. And finally, just conformity with the existing building alignment. By virtue of its placement to the rear, this new single-family dwelling wouldn't be in conformity with the existing building alignment.
So.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yes, so talk to us about the proposed use of the carriage house of how, so we know it's a single-family dwelling, how many square feet? And tell us how the two-car garage fits? And tell us how the two-car garage fits into it.
Certainly. For that, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Roach or Driscoll, the project architect.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The square foot of the new carriage house will be 3770 square feet. In the basement, there'll be 770 square foot living area. And there'll be an open stair all the way to the ceiling that'll bring the natural light. And then on the first floor, there'll be 870 square foot of living space with the dining room, kitchen, and living room. And then on the upper floor, there'll be three bedrooms, which will also be 150 square feet.
And how does the garage fit into this?
Can you please go back to the site plan? There's an existing driveway on the right side of the property. We're using that and then to get the garage doors out on the face of the building, put that on the right side. And that's why we moved over the building about 11 feet. That two-car garage in the rear right of the new carriage house.
Okay, and tell us about the change of grade from Bellevue to that carriage house.
Yeah, it's very minimal. The building will actually be about 160 feet away from Bellevue Street. It's, there's a slight grade from the street up to the rear there.
So in other words, I think my question is, how visible will this second building on this lot be from Bellevue Street?
It really wouldn't be very visible unless you're actually just walking by and happen to look down. It certainly isn't something that's going to stand out and jump at you casually as you're walking down or driving down Bellevue Street. But if you do happen, as you drive by the existing curb cut and look down that 160-foot way, you certainly will be able to see at least the right side portion. Yeah, which is, we would certainly see that right side portion. And as you can see from this, from the slide, at least in the bottom right, I mean, that existing carriage house, which has fallen into disrepair and was like that in 1991 when Mr. Hallarin purchased the property, is visible from Bellevue Street.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. I think, you know, this is a very complex renovation in addition. It appears they're reusing the street-facing side of the carriage house and then basically extending toward the rear. And I do think, you know, if it's moving 11 feet to the page left, you know, it's very hard to see this from the street due to the sort of existing kind of vegetation on the side. So I think this is an interesting, albeit seems like a massive undertaking to renovate and restore this in kind.
Any questions? Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. Mr. Robinson, maybe you can help. It doesn't look like a restoration to me because it's being moved. There is a new foundation, a new footprint, expanded footprint. It may be simulating what the original look like was, but this is not a restoration, is it?
I mean, it appeared, well, maybe Mr. Roach can speak to that. I mean, it appears that it is the sort of front half of the building will be, matches the same footprint of the existing, which you can see in these side-by-side. But maybe Mr. Roach would like to speak to it. It appears that they are reusing sort of the front half of the building, but adding in the addition in the rear.
Yeah, Mr. Roach can speak to how exactly they plan to make this a restoration and renovation, even though we're moving the building.
This is a, we have a very experienced general contractor who has built and renovated a number of these carriage houses. And what we hope to do is, because of the condition of the part of the structure, we're physically going to remove the primary architectural elements from the building and put them on-site and then reconstruct the structure pretty much as it is. So it's not like you're getting a moving, a house-moving company and you're picking it up and moving it onto a new foundation. You're taking some of the elements now, but you're building an entirely new building and reincorporating some of the old elements. Is that right? Actually, our goal is to incorporate all of the old elements. No, 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 I get that. I get that. I guess I just, well, not that it matters for our purposes. I wouldn't call that a restoration, but that's okay.
Got it, yeah.
I think you got a new structure, basically.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Eddie. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? May I hear from elected officials or representatives from elected officials first?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Just like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. The full community process was completed. We had an Butters meeting on May 4th. The applicant did go to the West Roxne Neighborhood Council on June 22nd and actually received a support vote of five to four at that meeting. In addition, the applicant did get support letters from about 15 or so neighbors. However, our position stems from, there were a couple of direct Butters opposed to the project, as well as the Bellevue Hill Improvement Association and a couple of neighbors on Ren Street that were concerned with this being, you know, renovated in the back of the home. You know, their view and everything seeing that. So for those reasons, we'd like to be on record in opposition. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Peter Favrito from City Councilman Matt O'Malley's office. The councilor would like to go on record in opposition as well. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan from City Council at large, Michael Flaherty. Echoing sentiments of the mayor's office, as well as councillor O'Malley, the councilor is on record now.
Madam Chair, we have those letters that Mr. Duggan spoke of and supported and of opposition.
And then I have two raised hands. I'll start with you, Ethel. Are you here for this proposal?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Can you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Ethel Maggitsen. I'm at 41 Ren Street. I am the direct Butter of the Hallarin proposal. I live right behind where that house would be. And I myself have submitted a letter with three other neighbors supporting it, and I know that nine other people have supported it as well. And yesterday, I sent a photograph of the back of the carriage house, which has been covered with torn blue tarp for at least a decade. And if I'm willing to tolerate the blight of that rundown, animal-filled carriage house rather than a new structure, it really says something about what it means to these neighbors who live on Ren and Bellevue. We purchased lots that we thought had two houses on it. That was it. And most people bought their houses for that reason. The privacy, the darkness, the sky, everything that goes with having a lot of land. This house would not be that visible from Bellevue, and Bellevue is a very busy street. From Ren Street, it would be totally visible, and it would even be moved further into my line of visibility by that move. I agree fully. It is not a restoration. It will have some architectural elements that pay tribute to the past, but this is a single-family dwelling where it is not zoned for that. And I and my neighbors on Ren Street really very assiduously oppose it. And just this morning, I was walking a neighbor's dog and bumped into a new neighbor who said that she supported it, thinking anything would be better than the blue tarp, but didn't understand really what it meant. So in fact, this has greater impact to Ren Street than it does to Bellevue, and it has very serious impact on me. It would be a whole new structure, lights, people, noise, driveway, cars coming up, the whole works. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the hearing. This is the second time, and it's never easy to say no to a neighbor, but I think that that's why we have zoning laws.
So may I hear from Mr. Kidd, and please give us new information? It's always hard being second, but please give us new information.
Okay, we also have Gerald. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Gerald Kidd, and my wife, Christine Mason, and I are the direct Butters at 128 Bellevue Street. We're the closest to where the proposed construction is going to occur. We are in support of the project. We've been the neighbors of the Hallarins for 27 years. We've had mixed feelings about this as the project has unfolded, but we had an extensive meeting with Mr. Hallarin and in which he explained the impact of this project for him and his family and the more detail about the plan. And he reassured us that this is a very viable project, and I think it will be a good thing for his family and for the neighborhood because it's going to be a beautiful structure.
Mr. Kidd, is your property similar to that of the Hallarins? The long, narrow property?
That's correct. It is.
Okay.
There are some differences that are important, I think, but...
Okay, got it. Thank you. Do I have the next person, Ms. Ambassador?
Yeah, sure. I have another caller, 759. You've been unmuted. 617, I'm sorry, 617-590. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. My name is Keith Barry. I live at 110 Bellevue Street. I'm a direct Butter to this project, and I want to go on record to be against it. The way the parking is set up, it's those four spots, the lights are going to shine into my house. The project they came before was for a different, but this isn't far off from what they came to the board with that was denied before. So I just want to go on record against it.
We have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes?
I did submit a request to be heard. My name is James Gallagher. I represent the Butters, Rick and Marie Dressler, 96 Bellevue Street.
And are you in support or in opposition?
No, my clients are in opposition. I agree with the members of the board as they mentioned today. This is not a restoration, but simply a creation of a second-family home. And I think one thing that's been left out of this that the proponent mentioned at the neighborhood meeting was that his plan to create a condominium for the two buildings, which would drastically change the nature of this neighborhood. This is, as many people have already mentioned, a single-family home neighborhood. Allowing the condominium to be created, to start to creep in, would drastically change this area of Bellevue Hill. To answer your question, Madam Chair, this project was before the board back in 2013. I also appeared in opposition at that hearing. And it was, as Mr. Barry just mentioned, a much more expansive project, but it was before the board in 2013. And as the board has done recently in many occasions, we submit that the board should stick with the code and enforce the code as it's meant to be. The proponent has not made any showing that there's a hardship that requires him or justifies a variance here. And we ask that it be denied.
Thank you. Okay, I happen to remember the project when it was here before, and it, this is very, it's not much different. It feels that it's the same level of density, and Bellevue is a nice street. I think, Mr. Fortune, you might know Bellevue better than I, but, you know, the lots are similar with the graceful front yards. And this, I think, would definitely change the character of the street. But that's my two cents. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, can I have an opportunity just to report a few of the points in opposition? It's been extended to prior projects. I'd just ask for that opportunity, please.
Yes, please, and keep it simple.
Thank you. I'd ask if we can go to the third slide. Mr. Barry, who resides at 110 and just came to speak in opposition, received relief from the ZPA back in 2004.
I honestly don't want to get personal, Mr. Cludier.
It's not personal. It has to do with whether this is in harmony with the code and would have, we've heard it may have a negative impact on the existing fabric of Bellevue Street. And I'm trying to raise a point in opposition to that.
So please do not use names. I do not want it to get personal. Please keep it technical. If you're talking about 110 Bellevue, talk about 110 Bellevue.
I understand and did not intend to make it personal, but 110 Bellevue Street does have a main home in the front with a single-family to the rear, which is exactly what Mr. Hallarin is seeking to do. 110 Bellevue did receive relief from the board back in 2004, albeit different participants, but the board felt that was the best and most appropriate use of the land and would be in harmony with the code. So what we are asking is nothing different than what was extended previously at 110. With respect to the Butters, there is another rear Butter who is the neighbor of, I only knew, I'm sorry not to get personal, there was a rear Butter on Ren Street who spoke in opposition, a woman. Her immediate neighbor on Ren Street, who was a rear Butter but also a side Butter based on the shape of the lot, is in support of this project, as is the owner at 128 Street. So there is also significant support locally for this project. With respect to this condominium, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think that we've all received the letters, and it's a very mixed bag. So can you please conclude?
Certainly. With respect to visibility, there's significant natural buffering between this lot and Ren Street. And we would certainly, working with VPDA, add additional buffering as deemed necessary on either side. The dwelling would be set back 60 feet from Ren Street. It would be set back 71 Street from 110. So for those reasons, Madam Chair, we feel this would be a very appropriate use. The density, if you combine the FAR of the main home and the proposed dwelling, it would still be .23 for the entire lot, and this is a .5 zone. So it's certainly not overly dense for this area, and it's sufficient. So I appreciate this board's time. If it has any further questions, we'd be certainly happy to answer those. Thank you very much.
Okay, so let's see. So we are into decision-making time. May I have a motion, please?
Yeah. My feeling is, it certainly is a good idea to renovate a rundown carriage house. That's fine. But this proposal is not doing that. It's actually moving and creating an entirely new building, which creates a problem of two living units on the same lot, two separate buildings. So for that reason, I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice. I think the idea of renovating and restoring the carriage house is a good one, but I don't believe that this proposal includes that.
May I have a second?
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Eric.
Okay, motion carries. It's been denied without prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the last case of the day, calling BOA 120-9343, 5 Winston Road. This is to erect a new three-floory multifamily dwelling, four units. The violation, who proposed four off-street parking, the violation is Article 60, Section 8. Use is forbidden for family use. Article 60, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot size minimum to build a dwelling is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 60, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the front yacht is insufficient, setback is insufficient. Article 60, Section 9, the side yacht setback is insufficient. And Article 60, Section 9, the rear yacht setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I didn't, I was right at the, I was, Jim, upside down. I didn't realize he was porting on, so less...
I'm sorry, Eric, are you presenting right now?
Sorry, I am the architect for this, I believe. Joni Sheehan should be the presenter. I'm not sure if you can...
She is on. Give me one second. Can you make her panelist? Joni? I see it. Joni and Eric.
Hello, yes, this is Yoni Sheehan with White Dega Properties.
Okay, who's presenting and whoever's presenting, please get started.
Got it. Sorry about that. Madam Chair, thank you for your time, and members of the board. Name for the record, Yoni Sheehan with White Dega Properties. Business address, 150 East Central Street in Natick, Massachusetts. So what we're proposing over at 5 Winston Road is a four, a new construction, four-story, four-unit... four-unit property. This is going to be a rental property. And, let's see, for off-street parking, we actually have had extensive engagements, community engagement over the past many months.
So, Yoni, can you please talk about the proposal? We'll hear about community engagement from the mayor's office, but tell us what you're proposing to do today.
Got it. Thank you for that. Yeah, like I said, so this is currently a vacant lot, and we are proposing a four-story, four-unit, on, there's only one unit on the first floor, which allows for parking space, and I'll get to that in a second, one unit on the second floor. And we have essentially, on the last, on the top floors, we have two duplexes on the third and fourth floor. Like I said, this is going to be a rental property. We have other projects...
Tell us about the bedroom count and the size of the unit. Is it, so I'm looking at a two-bedroom, how many square feet is that?
Got it. So I believe you're looking at a unit, this is actually unit three and unit four, the duplex units on top, and these are, let's see...
Sorry, Yoni, they are 1,000 and 1,100 square feet.
Thank you for that, Eric.
And so, it looks like it's a combination of twos and threes, is that what it is?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Two three-bedrooms on the first and second floor.
Okay, and the three bedrooms, what is the average square feet?
About 1,300 square feet.
Eric, you've been to this board before. Please talk us through how the parking is going to work and the violations that this new construction is creating.
Thank you, yes. There are four parking spaces in the rear of the building that would be partially, three of them would be partially covered, one would be kind of open in the corner. And then, as you come in, there's actually a spot to the right also, one of the comments from the, one of the many comments from the neighbors in the initial meeting was to add more parking, and so we had added that fifth space there, which is a compact space. So because there are three compact spaces and two full-size spaces, we only have four per code, but we do have the fifth compact space that is squeezed in there.
Okay, and you have a lot of violations. Tell us what zoning district this is in, because it looks like your use is forbidden?
Yes, as a four-family, this district, the use would be forbidden.
As far as the zoning district, the 3F 6,000.
Okay, and how large is the lot?
I believe just over 4,000 square feet, to be exact, 4,080, sorry, 4,032 square feet.
Okay. And tell us about the height and the rear yard?
Got it. Eric, can you actually speak of the...
The height and the rear yard? I believe it is 32 and a half feet tall. Yes.
Okay, because I'm, because it looks like your excessive, height is excessive in feet, and I'm assuming it's also excessive in stories, but it just calls out excessive in feet? So what's, what's the required height?
I'm double-checking that right now.
Mr. Robinson, can you help us with this?
So, can I, the plans I'm looking at are a three-story building, not a four-story building. Is that, this lost a story or something?
Yeah, we removed a story until we're under the 35-foot limit.
So you're 32, or you're 32 feet, so you're, there is no more height violation on this? There could be a story violation, Madam Chair. Agree with that, but, okay, I just want, because there was discussion of duplexes and those are...
So, so let's make sure we are all on the same page. It's three stories, it's four units, it's proposed four off-street parking plus, plus one.
Correct.
Right, so did any of the violations when you knocked off that story change?
Yeah, we're no longer...
Do you have a new refusing letter? Okay.
We have a new refusal letter.
And does Mr. Robinson have the most recent plans?
Yes, yes.
He does?
Yes, the ones we're looking at, yes.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, help us on this. How are the plans?
So the plans are definitely, so it is a three-story building, it's shown here. We're at the two three-bedroom units on one and two, two-bedroom units on the third floor. That all seems consistent. You know, I don't know, it does call it out, it's 32 feet, the zoning is 35. So I don't know if it's a two-and-a-half-story district, which it probably is, I guess.
Yeah, it's 30, it would be at 35 feet, but they look like they're presenting it as a, as a regular triple-decker.
Yep.
So that's, that's probably what counts for the difference.
I agree.
And then...
And the rest seems consistent with the parking as they've shown, and setbacks appear to be the same.
So my question is about that rear yard. What's that rear yard requirement, and how far into the rear yard are you?
The rear yard requirement is 30 feet, and we are currently at, I believe, five feet.
10 foot 3, it says, called out on the draw.
Okay.
Okay. And Mr. Robinson, how does that look? Can you get a sense of what the abutter, how close the abutter is to the property line?
Yeah, I mean, it certainly, there's a sort of more traditional, sort of two-family with a pitched roof to the left of it, and it looks like it's open to the corner with no development. So it's consistent, I think, with the height of the adjacent building.
Okay, and tell us again how that, that additional parking space, does that mean you need an extra curb cut?
No, when you come towards the back of the building, you can turn right into one space, and the other four spaces are straight ahead of you.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? Elected officials first, and representative of elected officials, please.
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Don't say people here from the Mayor's Office of Legal Services. This applicant, there was an abutter meeting held on May 6th, where parking concerns, parking concerns, building height, and concerns that may use the property were addressed by, in a butter, on that meeting, and at another meeting on September 21st. The applicant did, you know, they will work with the community and be sure to maintain the community, maintain the property. Since, again, since that May 6th, a first-abutter meeting, the applicant has gained support from the butters and neighbors, the butters in support position that have been sent over to the board. And again, another meeting was held on September 21st with the Weston Gardens Community, community group, where all questions and concerns seem to be answered, and the mayor's office has not received any opposition at this time. Again, from the May 6th meeting, where it was four stories, it fell down to three stories, there were four units, but did address the concerns by adding a parking spot and taking off that story. So at this time, the mayor's office would like to go on support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a couple others support, a couple others opposition.
Okay. Stand, I'm not sure if this was for the previous, just... Hi, 617-59, are you looking to give testimony on this as well? They may no longer be there. I have no additional raised hands.
Can I just ask one question of the proponent? Do you own the corner parcel as well?
No, no, we do not. We do not. That's owned by someone else.
Okay. Okay, so I think we've heard from everybody. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with VPDA design review.
Can they just take special note of the rear yard? It just seems greedy.
Yeah, I can, I can add that, because there is additional, it looks like there's additional length in some of these units that they could tighten the rear yard, so we could ask that the VPDA specifically look at the rear yard setback and hopefully increase it.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, or you're all set?
Thank you very much, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And welcome once more, Bethany.
Thank you.
So first, you're first set, so hopefully everything went well.